The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact the city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
If we could have a roll, please.
Alderman Tom Grady. Alderman Ted Grady. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. Alderman Isnack. Alderman Sebnek. Alderman Hammond. Alderman Lewis. All are present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sebnek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through G and Communications H through O.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing done, the motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
My name is Jordan Redditt, 754 Harding Street. We're new to Manassia. We just bought the house in August. We had some issues with the park already in August. Last summer, somebody threw a glass jar over at our dog that was in our yard. I wasn't home, but if I was home, the cops would have called on me. I know I watch the meetings regularly, Stan. Life's his dog. We love our dog, too. It's like our kid. So on top of that, there's also a garbage issue over there. Tons of garbage are on the basketball court. I don't know if the hoops need to be removed temporarily or if the police can step up enforcement, but we get wrappers, cups, blowing into our yard, and our dog's chewing on them. So I'd like something to be done with that. And then the last issue is Michael's Construction. They broke two sidewalk panels that they put blacktop in, and another sidewalk panel is also sinking from where they were digging. Just curious if there was any, if they're going to reach out and replace those, or if anyone has a schedule as far as that goes. They were installing AT&amp;T fiber. They did that last October, and nothing's been done. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Do we have a location with those sidewalk stuffs? Right in front of our house, there are two black things.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Sorry, I'm super nervous talking in front of people. I'm here because I got a notice in the mail about my bartender's license. I don't know if I'm speaking at the right time.
We can bring that up once we get to that point in the agenda.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was speaking at the right time.
It's all good.
Sandra DeBilla Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Few items I wanted to bring up. First of all, I wanted to thank the Police Department for their annual report. I thought it was very thorough. Of course, the one item that I believe is missing is code enforcement. I still would like to see that returned to the Police Department. And ironically, obviously, I read too much. In Sunday's paper, this was out of Milwaukee, but it does, it was a study that was done, and it said in urban neighborhoods where lots were cleaned up, they had a 29% reduction in gun violence, a 22% drop in burglaries, and a 30% reduction in nuisance complaints. Our city and our code enforcement should be reviewing this because it's not only aesthetically pleasing, but it's for the benefit of the entire community and welcoming people into our community, especially on our main corridors. And code enforcement, in my opinion, has been lacking severely, and that's why I do believe it needs to be citation-based. And that's not happening because I think if you hit somebody in the pocketbook, they're going to remember it. Then, another thing I read in the paper today, it's not in your packet, but the Sustainability Board met last week, and Alderman Hammond's name is in the paper today. And I'll just, regarding a "Lomo May." And according to him, quote, "Council member Austin Hammond said 'Lomo May' doesn't require council approval because it doesn't change or suspend the ordinance." I want to disagree with that. I know this is just a feel-good initiative by him, but according to the ordinance that was passed, "The Sustainability Committee shall make recommendations to the council or another committee, board, or authority regarding sustainability practices." If the Sustainability Board was in favor of this "Lomo May," it could have been a recommendation to the council to discuss and decide. It's a policy, even if it isn't an ordinance. And I think what this is doing is confusing people because now they will be putting signs in their front yards, and there's going to be the impression unless you stop and read the sign, does it say "No Moe May?" Does it say "Lomo May"? What does that mean? And actually, signage is a source of pollution. And we have so much signage on our terraces in this city that adding to this is just compromising the situation. I bring this up because not just this issue, but I think what this does is tell other boards and committees that they can go ahead and make their own decisions, too, because if it's not changing the ordinance or it's not changing a resolution, we don't have to go to the council. So it's a slippery slope, and I think Austin Hammond should be called out on this because I think if another alderman would have done it, it would have been to the Athletics Board, to tell you the truth. Okay. Then, now that I've made a lot of enemies, the Sixth Amendment to the BRIN project. I'm glad to see that it's moving along. It looks very nice. I do have a few questions regarding it because it appears that half of it's being built before the other half. I hope we're not allowing an occupancy permit before the entire project is complete. Secondly, I would really like to see something done with the fencing. I think it's been an eyesore since it's been posted because what we're having is blanketing of signage on top of each other, and it flaps in the wind, and it blows around, and it's our main intersection. And when Nina did theirs downtown, it was a solid wall. You didn't have all this graffiti, signage. I'm a signage person, I guess. Also, I think it's lacking erosion control. And is there, if for some reason this does not get completed by the fall, another extension? Is there going to be any type of penalty in place? Because this has been going on a long time. Other projects have been being built, even though they've had to face the same COVID situations, and I think it's time to wrap this one up. Then, under ordinances and resolutions, there is the Resolution R-1623 regarding the grant funding for the Jefferson Park Plan. I would like to mention that this plan was done in 2019, '20 by East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning. Half of the council wasn't on board at that time, and I doubt if they read the plan. I doubt if some of the members here read the plan. And I don't have a problem with seeking the DNR grant funding, but what I have a problem with is that the relocation of the trail. Because according to that plan, it puts it down Broad Street. And so it's either taking out Old Grog's parking or my terrace. And the Friendship Trail currently goes down First Street. So I have a problem with that, and I think that whole plan needs to be relooked at by the entire council.
You're at six minutes now, Mrs. Taylor.
Okay. I would go on. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, I just do want to make a correction in the paper that Mrs. Taylor quotes. It says, "The Manassia Sustainability Committee is encouraging residents to participate in Lomo May, in which they mow less often, yet don't allow the grass and weeds to exceed an eight-inch limit, which is established by ordinance." So there is no change to ordinance. There is nothing any different. It is just Alderman Hammond's opinion that this is a good idea. Seeing that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would you, I'm guessing you want to separate it?
Yeah, no, I'm not going to separate any. I'll just move forward. And then, at this time, Mayor, I'd like for us to approve the Common Council Minutes of 41823.
It's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing done, the motion carries. Item two is the new Common Council Agenda Minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have taken both right away. Sorry about that. So at this time, I'd like for us to approve the new Common Council Minutes of 41823.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing done, the motion carries. Item two is a recommendation to award. Is there a motion? Alderman Sebnek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to award contract unit number 2023-02. This is street reconstruction. This is the Worsaw section for and near our future QuickTrip by Summers Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $173,407.90.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Yeah, if it works.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of April 14 through April 27, 2023 in the amount of $3,680,95.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for Jennifer. You know, I saw the big void check there for $424,000. Was that just a reclass to, it looks like you paid someone else instead, or is that related to the BRIN?
On the next check register, you'll see the correction. The payment to advanced construction was put on the Don Hipas vendor, so that check was voided and reissued the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sebnek.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that when I tried to click on it, there's, you can't get to it, but it is on our, because I read it. And I do have, Jennifer, like, six items, but I will call you on those. I didn't have time today to do it.
Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is a beverage operator's application. I'm not sure if we would like to hear from the chief first or Alderman Nichols. What's your pleasure?
Good evening. So what we have this evening is a application for the individual who had two prior offenses within the last three years. So based on guideline number three of our policy guidelines established by the Common Council, Lieutenant Peter Sawyer had made a recommendation to deny the alcohol operator's application. First violation was September 9 for pure curer cell to underage person. And the second was January 19, 2022, for a municipal-level violation of disorderly conduct.
Would you like to hear from applicant two? Would you care to make a comment as well? At this time, if you'd like to, you could.
So first to speak with the, about the disorderly conduct. My coworker and I had just finished our shift at the bar, and a man came in that was kicked out multiple times. So we told the bartender working that he wasn't allowed to be there, and she didn't feel comfortable telling him to leave, so we did. And then he got physical, and we just escorted him out of the bar. He did end up calling the police after saying that we attacked him, but after the police who responded to the incidents reviewed the footage, it had been ruled that we were not guilty, but I had already paid my fine and pled no contest and worked to deal with the city attorney. I was told by the judge that if I wouldn't have done that, it would have been dropped because he had lost the trial. I had asked or called him on Thursday to see if there was anything he could write up, and I didn't get any response back. But it's not on my record, and I've never once assaulted this guy, but just, they, by his statement, they were issuing disorderly conducts all the way around. And then for the underage drinking, it was a sting, and I had actually asked someone to cover my shift that day. I just recently moved out of my ex's house, and, I'm sorry, it was a really hard day for me. It happened five minutes into my shift. I did check his ID. It was just a couple of months from the day that it should have been. I've been very aware since. And anybody I could work with without from that I'm consistent with checking IDs and following all of the rules. This was just a very bad day for me that I shouldn't have been at work. I was a mess. I was by myself. The bar was packed. And I really, I do apologize for not being completely focused that day, but again, I have been very aware since. Sorry, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Grady.
Excuse me. I would just like to add one component. The recollection which he's providing in regards to the incident is fairly accurate. It sounds like there was some conflicting information, so thank you for that.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Can I ask the chief, was she correct in the statement that that was a sting operation? What was she indicted for?
We were doing generalized compliance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Because service to an underage person is involved and important to the job, I move for the denial of this, of the beverage operator's license for Kyria Jo Navari.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Isnack.
May I abstain from voting since I hold a liquor license, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing no other, go ahead.
So even though, let's say this does get denied, it doesn't mean she can't bartend, correct? So she could still bartend, but she just can't do it on her own.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? And the motion is to deny.
Motion carries seven zero for the deny. Oh, wait. Six one with Rosita abstaining.
If you have questions, I don't know if the chief can answer any of those questions for her. Would you have some questions? Did you want to talk to the chief before you leave? So it sounds like she, if you would be able to talk to her out in the hallway, that'd Item three is a listing contract. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recommend to council the approval of a one-year leasing contract for 205 Matheson Street as presented with Kyle Keel as at a list price of $22,900 with the attached addendum number one, as stated.
That's a one-year listing contract, contract, not leasing. Okay, there's a motion and a second. You just said leasing. I wanted to make sure people understood that. Motion and a second. Did you have more, Becky?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, could you review for the folks listening what is included in that addenda?
Certainly. So again, this is 205 Matheson Street, abutting the Nina Manassia Water Treatment Facility. This is a vacant city-owned lot. Basically, the proposed listing includes a purchase price of $22,900, similar to the last two that we had just recently sold. The buyer shall execute a land purchase and development agreement with the city on or before closing. Buyer agrees to construct a single-family house within 18 months from the date of closing, demonstrated by the issuance of a building permit and the substantial commencement of construction. Buyer and all subsequent owners shall not sell the property to the Nina Manassia Sewage Commission or affiliates without prior written consent from the City of Manassia. And then the deed restrictions, including the guarantee of a pilot payment if the property becomes tax-exempt in the amount equal to the value of the property multiplied by the tax rate, as well as a right of reversion if a building permits and substantial construction have not commenced within 18 months. The final two, the city will not make any representations or provide gap coverage. And the last one, listing exclusion for the Nina Manassia Sewage Commission. So basically, the listing exclusion would be that entity could not make an offer through this process. They would have to come and talk to us formally in a different process. We do have one in conversations with, excuse me, Attorney Struve. As noted on line 318 addenda, it says attached addenda, and it references addendum one. Then the attachment actually references addenda one, so it would be just a correction to change that title to addendum one on the attachment. And then the second one, I apologize, would be to strike lines 72 in correlation with the striking of line 57 through 60.
Do those changes need to be done through the amendment process, or they can just be done before the agreement is sent over?
Before the agreement is sent over.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Schrader.
There's a motion on the floor. I don't see any other discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is the Sixth Amendment to the Land Purchase and Development Agreement with the BRIN LLC. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Sixth Amendment to the Land Purchase and Development Agreement by and between the City of Manassia and the BRIN LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second by Alderman Grady. Did you have more discussion, Alderman Nichols?
Yes. Director Schrader, could you provide a, obviously, the dates are being changed to move out a little further, and then could you also provide an update on the status of the project?
Yes, certainly. So certainly, this project has seen some setbacks well above and beyond just the standard COVID of supply chains and labor shortage, but that is part of the setbacks. So we are looking at pushing this completion date back to the end of the year, December 31 of 2023. Currently, it is May 1 of 2023. The building, south building, is underway. The north building is actually a steel building. I was told last, a week ago today, that that steel was ordered and is purchased, and it is expected to be here by the end of next week. So hopefully, that stays on that schedule, and that building will start to go up very quickly on the site as well. From our conversations with the developer, the multiple conversations they have confirmed they are really pushing to get this project done by this fall, and it is one of their top priorities.
Thank you for that update.
Alderman Sebnek.
I'm glad Alderman Nichols addressed that because I was going to a little bit, but the one part that I was going to ask is if you knew if the steel had been delivered yet, because it was a week ago when I was told, two weeks, and so, does that mean there's still one more week or what? Okay. So he said, correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is Resolution 15. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to send to Council R1523 a resolution authorizing the application of grant funding for the rehabilitation of the Jefferson Park boat launch.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second to approve Resolution 15. Discussion, Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask a question that combines these two resolutions, just because it might be easier for that, just to summarize what each of them is for, because they're both coming to us from the Park and Recreation Board. And then I also have an amendment to offer to this one.
Correct. So I can give a quick summary of these. So you do have two resolutions. Both of them are related to the Jefferson Park project. The first one is related to the Jefferson Park boat launch, and it's a recreational boat launch grant. So we're requesting up to $250,000 for that to go towards the boat launch. And then the R16 grant request is actually one grant, or excuse me, one application that will apply to two different grants. One for the Knoll Stewardship Grant and one for the Recreational Trails Grant. The Recreational Trails Grant is federally funded, and the other one is DNR-managed and DNR-funded. So those two both will apply to this, and the Stewardship Grant will again be requested up to $250,000, and the Recreational Trails will be $100,000 that we're requesting.
Thank you for that summary. When you mentioned a dollar amount, is the dollar amount something that would be up for approval from the state legislature, since we're talking about the Nelson Stewardship Fund, or something beneath their level of?
We would keep it beneath their level. That level is $250,000, so would we request just underneath that so that it wouldn't require the joint finance approval at the state level?
Thank you. I do have an amendment to offer to Resolution 15, and it comes directly from Resolution 16. 16. After the second whereas, I would like to add, whereas the City of Minasha approved the updated Jefferson Park concept plan on January 16th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second for the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment?
My reason for adding that is to make them consistent, and I think it's important to, to communicate that we have revisited the plan again recently. So thank you for that.
One question?
Okay, so, so that would be before the one that says, whereas the City of Minasha approved the Jefferson Park Vision Plan on?
After that one.
It'd be after?
That's the one.
That is the one? So we're, we're amending that particular line?
And adding in if you go to the?
Right, but the way she made the motion was, it was to add and add below that, which isn't the case. It's to reword the second whereas as the dates that she suggested, just so that, okay, well then.
If I, next page.
Yeah, if I understood correctly, it's the same verbiage as Resolution 16, correct, Alderman Nichols?
She wants it to mimic that.
Okay.
So it'd be a second whereas.
So one is a vision plan and one is a concept plan.
Correct. The vision plan was the larger document that was approved back in 2017, I believe it was. And then just in January of this year, you approved the concept plan. So just that one-page concept plan that you approved. So it's adding that additional line that is currently in Resolution R16 to include that same language in Resolution R15.
Okay, but I swear she gave a different date than what was, what is stated here. So please read back the, if I could, ask the clerk to read back the amendment.
Whereas the City of Minasha approved the updated Jefferson Park concept plan on January 16th, 2023, and?
Okay. Then I'm good. I swear to God, she said six, okay, January 16th. I thought she said 2016, sorry. Because the other one was 2017, and I'm thinking, wait, that's backwards. So now you understand where I'm coming from. All right, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Seeing none, the amendment is approved. Any further discussion on the entire resolution?
I will watch, re-watch the tape, because I swear it's a writer.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the resolution as amended. Can just use item two, yeah? That one's mine, too.
Motion carries eight zero.
We're on item 16. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for Resolution 1623, a resolution authorizing the application of the grant funding for the implementation of the Jefferson Park Plan.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Seket, is this grant pertaining to the trail portions that are strictly inside the park, or does it extend beyond the park boundaries?
No, thanks for asking that question. This is strictly just within the boundaries of Jefferson Park and related to the rehab of the trail that runs along, parallel to the waterfront, and then the realignment that connects to Third Street, as well as the new trail that would be where the boulevard. Anything outside the scope of Jefferson Park or the boundaries of Jefferson Park is not included in this project or associated with this resolution.
Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Megan, one question. Just a little, when we're approving the Jefferson Park Plan, or the implementation, I got to say the word right. Implement, implementation. Implementation, I got it. Implementation. There you go. It's almost like book calls.
Yeah, exactly.
Jefferson Park Plan. Megan, is this also approving, does this have anything to do with the pool or anything like that that we're approving in an underhanded, or under, nothing to do with that?
No, it's strictly related to the content in the resolution, which outlines that it's related to the trails and the trails amenities.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Do you want to change that word out of there right? Implementation there, I got it. Book calls. Lesson for them.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is appointments. There's one this evening. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to bring the mayor's reappointment of Jacob Anderson to the planning commission for the term 5123, 5126.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Sevack?
Yeah, I, I understand it's a reappointment, but even so, I think in the future, some type of communication should come to us indicating that they're interested, and then possibly a resume.
I would not want to ask for a resume for someone who's already there. I can send you a note back that says they're still interested in serving.
Yeah, because, you know, I, I don't know this person, and I don't know anything about him. And I think to educate ourselves on who we're appointing, that that kind of information be, be provided, it was always provided in the past.
He was only appointed, vote a year ago.
Okay.
So you got that information at that point.
Then, then put it back in there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item N is public comment. Is there any public comment?
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I would like to thank Alderman Nichols for the clarification regarding, because the resolution states, "For the purpose of rehabilitation and realignment of the trail system." So, and it's referring to the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan that East Central Wisconsin Planning did. So I'm going to hold you to it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Minasha with video recordings of city meetings. Minasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Minasha issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.